This one is absent.
Thank you, Suzanne. Moving on to item two in the agenda, the Connecticut Green Bank. Who do we have here on behalf of the Connecticut Green Bank?
Looks like a couple of banditos to the left and a new face in the middle, so welcome.
Is Kasia, is this yours? Do you want to introduce and maybe just name and title of folks who are presenting?
Hello, so we have Emily, actually, your name is Mackie Dykes from Connecticut Green Bank. I heard Emily give a presentation at joint facilities a few months back. And at their request with Deputy Mayor Susak, we invited them here to give the presentation all council. And I'll welcome them on now. If you could just give your titles as well.
Mr. Mayor, may I just make an inquiry to see if Donna, Susak, and Mr. Kiner have us? Are they hearing us well this time? Bill perhaps, and Donna, and the other staff?
Yeah, Chris.
You sound great. You've heard everybody. Thank you.
Wonderful. As you know, I'd just like to credit again Alex and Paul and Debbie for jumping on the trouble we had last time. We got the vendors in here, got better mics and better equipment to make sure that everybody would be able to participate. So I just wanted to make sure at the outset, Mayor, that it was working. All of our testing showed that it did. So I'm glad. And if you have any trouble during the course of it, please let us know. Thank you.
Appreciate it, Chris. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Chris. And so Emily, and I apologize if I didn't get the other name, if you folks wouldn't mind just your titles. And the floor is yours. Welcome to the Enfield Town Council. We're looking forward to your presentation.
Thank you. Can you guys hear me all right?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
All right, I'm also showing some slides. Can you see those?
We can. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for having us this evening. My name is Emily Basham, and I'm a manager of partnership development at the Connecticut Green Bank. And I'm also joined by Mackie Dykes, who's a VP of our financing programs at the Connecticut Green Bank. Thank you for your time this evening. We're here to talk about the solar municipal assistance program at the Green Bank. And I'll turn it over to Mackie to get us started.
Great. Thanks, Emily. And thank you, everyone, for allowing us to join the meeting tonight. Emily, can you put your slides in presentation mode?
Yes.
There we go. Thank you. Yep, that's better. So as Emily said, my name is Mackie Dykes. I'm the Vice President of Financing Programs at the Connecticut Green Bank. We are a quasi-state agency started back in 2011 to help support Connecticut's clean energy goals by, as our name implies, by bringing the tools of financing to bear to help pay for the projects that are needed to meet the clean energy goals that the governor and the legislature lay out. So we are publicly funded, publicly created with that mission, so not a private bank driven by profit, but more so, again, by helping the state achieve its goals. We take the public funding we get to partner with private investors to drive in private capital to help pay for these projects. Back in 2011, when we started, the legislature and the governor realized that we don't have enough money to support everything that needed to happen to meet the clean energy goals ourselves. So we were created to figure out ways to get private capital in at affordable rates to help consumers access the money they needed to make these projects happen. Next slide. So we created the Solar Map Program, which we'll talk about in a minute, to help municipalities realize their solar goals. It's run in conjunction with CSW Energy. They're a Connecticut-based solar engineering firm. We chose them through an RFP to help support the program. I don't believe Alan Savins is on the call, but hopefully we'll have more meetings to come, and then you'll get to know CSW Energy. Next slide. So our Solar Map Program, since our early days, we've been helping municipalities go solar through our Green Bank Solar Power Purchase Agreement. We'll get into that in a minute, but it's essentially a financing tool so that we can cover 100% of the cost to help a municipality go solar. And we've done dozens of projects around the state through that program. But as we were doing those projects, we saw that, and you know, talked with towns about their path to get them done, and realized that financing was not the biggest, or not the only barrier, and oftentimes not the biggest barrier to making a solar project happen. In fact, frankly, how you're going to pay for these projects comes typically later. And a lot of our customers, not only municipalities, but businesses, homeowners, just don't have the time or the expertise to get to figuring out a solar project. So that's where Solar Map comes in. Next slide. So we, through this program, provide assistance to get you all the way from, hey, you know, we'd love to do some solar projects, reduce our costs, you know, provide green energy through our residents, from that sort of high-level concept all the way to actually turning on solar systems for your municipal buildings. So we start with a meeting like this, introducing the program, who we are, what we can do. And then we move from there to just really anywhere you're interested in exploring solar. We'll do the technical diligence required to make sure that there is potential there. And assuming there is, and, you know, and those sites make sense to you, then we'll go onsite, we'll develop solar proposals, we'll get utility bills, we'll do all the diligence required to make sure, you know, that it's fully technically feasible with the site, and also put together a project proposal for you to review. And at that point, you know, come up with some estimates on what your solar savings could be. And once, you know, once everyone's, we've got sort of concrete proposals here, what the bill, you know, what the projects could look like. If the town wants to move forward, then the Green Bank runs an RFP to find contractors to build these projects. And this is where another benefit of the program comes in, because we work with multiple towns to bundle together projects to put them out to bid. So we're able to get more attractive pricing for your project than if you were just to act alone. So, you know, right now, we're working with seven towns, and we've got 24 projects. So, you know, by acting together, municipalities can achieve better costs than nothing going out on your own. And then once we've got sort of all, now we've got all the details together, once that RFP is done, we've got someone to install it. We've all agreed upon the sites and what the projects look like. Then we sign the final agreement with you, the town, and we, you know, we start building the system and turn it on. So I'll pause there. I'm going to turn it over to Emily to talk about the, sort of, the mechanism of what that contract is between the Green Bank and the town that actually makes this happen. All the work that I just went through is leading up to this agreement, this power purchase agreement. And really, up until this point, there's no commitment by the town to do us or the program. It's this power purchase agreement that actually is the contract between us and you. And, you know, this is what enables us to go out and pay for the system and get it built. So let me turn, actually, let me pause there and see if there's any questions. Otherwise, I'll turn it over to Emily to talk about the power purchase agreement.
Any questions from anyone on the phone? Hearing none. Any questions?
I lost that mic. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions in the council chambers? Hearing none. Go right ahead, Emily. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Mackie. So as Mackie mentioned, Solar Map provides kind of the technical and project development support to use the Green Bank Solar Power Purchase Agreement. That's how we're financing these projects. So there's many ways to go solar. We found that municipalities are attracted to using a power purchase agreement as opposed to actually, you know, purchasing systems themselves or leasing panels. A power purchase agreement is an agreement between the Connecticut Green Bank and, you know, would be the town of Enfield, where the Green Bank is the seller of electricity, and the town of Enfield would be the procure of energy. So under this arrangement, the Green Bank actually owns all of the solar systems. We're responsible for constructing them and monitoring them. And under a power purchase agreement, you're agreeing to buy all of the energy that is generated from these systems on a per kilowatt hour basis at a rate that's discounted from your utility rate. So the town wouldn't be responsible for owning the system, maintaining it, or monitoring it. That would be the responsibility of the Green Bank. And you're just agreeing to buy all the kilowatt hours that are coming off of the system. So just to highlight why this arrangement might be attractive for the town. Essentially, you're agreeing to install these systems and get a lower electricity rate. So you're locking in your electricity rate at a lower rate than your utility rate. And these are 20-year agreements, so over the 20-year term, as utility costs continue to rise and your PPA rate stays fixed over that time period, your savings is increasing. And that's illustrated in the chart on the right-hand side. Another benefit is that municipalities can't take advantage of the federal tax credits that are available for these types of projects. So the Connecticut Green Bank, along with our private investor partners, can capture that tax credit, and they can pass on those benefits through lower electricity rates. And we mentioned, you know, there's no operations and maintenance costs, so that gives you peace of mind. These systems are our responsibility to make sure they're running efficiently, because you're only agreeing to buy what is generated. So we want to make sure it's generating as we predict. And of course, because we own these systems, we'll be providing all of the upfront capital. And through the Solar Map Program, it's really no obligation as we scope out projects and propose system designs and pricing. And then, of course, we'll be constructing and paying for the systems. We just wanted to highlight another municipality that has taken advantage of the Green Bank Solar Power Purchase Agreement, the town of Coventry. They have eight solar systems that we have financed, six are roof-mounted, and two are carports. So needless to say, they've enjoyed this financing product and are a great case study. Charlotte Town Manager would be happy to speak about their experience through the program. And they actually used our solar PPA prior to us creating the Solar Map Program, where we're supporting towns through, you know, the preliminary steps of looking at solar projects. We recently created the Solar Municipal Assistance Program. So as Mackie mentioned, in our first round or our first batch of municipalities, we're working with seven towns to install 24 projects or 5.3 megawatts of solar. So right now, we're speaking with towns such as Enfield about looking at kind of a second round of this program, where we're talking with towns, scoping out projects, understanding what your sustainability goals are. And if the town is interested in participating in the program, this kind of outlines what our next steps are and what our timeline is. The incentives that are available through the state kind of run on an annual basis. So we're preparing for next year's utility incentive program in the spring. So we're speaking with towns and looking at project sites for the next handful of months, developing them to head into that utility program in the spring. So this kind of outlines what the project timeline would be, and of course, we can provide these slides to you so you get a better sense of that. And maybe we'll just stop here to see if there's questions with the program or how the power purchase agreement works, really anything about our presentation so far.
Thank you, Emily. Appreciate it. Any questions from anyone on the phone?
Emily, is this also just done?
Yeah, Donna, just say your name. Thank you. Go ahead.
Take care of the removal and, I guess, I'm going to say recycle of the solar panels when your useful life is done.
So through the power purchase agreement, at the end of the 20 years, there's three different options for kind of how you could move forward. If the town is, you know, enjoying the generation and wants to continue the power purchase agreement, there's an option to extend it five years. You could also purchase the system outright at a fair market value price. Or the Green Bank could come and, you know, remove the system. I don't have too many details on panel removal. I don't think we've reached the end of too many 20-year agreements yet, Mackie. But if you know some details about disposal and recycling, we might have to get back to you on that.
Thank you.
Is that it, Donna? Anyone else on the phone? Charlotte or, excuse me, Counselor Lawrie or Counselor Kiner?
I'm fine, thank you.
Any questions in the council chambers? Counselors Farada and Counselor Sacala.
Emily, thank you for that presentation, but here's my question. I thought you, if I heard correctly, you said that one of the advantages for the town is that we would buy this electricity at a discounted rate from our normal supplier. Is that right?
Correct. We would only be proposing projects where we could deliver energy savings.
And once we negotiate the power agreement and we agree on the price, we're locked into that price for 20 years, correct?
Correct. These are fixed rates, yes.
So what would happen if five years or in year six or seven, ever-source rates somehow were lower than what we negotiated with you? Would we still be locked in at the higher rate?
Yeah, that's an excellent question. The 20-year rate that we determine is essentially, you know, we're looking at our cost to build and dividing that over the 20-year period. So we're fixing that rate to be paid back for our capital costs of constructing the system. So you're right, the rate would be locked in for 20 years, you know, regardless of the utility rate. But I'm not, if I had to bet, I wouldn't anticipate utility rates declining over the next 20 years. And it's pretty standard industry practice to use a 3% escalator when determining energy savings. And I believe we use a little bit more conservative of 2% assumption in utility rate escalation.
Okay.
This is Mackie. I'll just add, so yeah, the utility rates go up and down, you know, kind of like the weather. Hot and cold. But when you look at the trend over time, it has, you know, they're pretty steadily going up. We don't do a project unless, or propose unless, you know, the town or our customer really pushes hard. We typically won't start unless we can deliver at least a 10% discount to the current rate just to make sure, you know, what you're talking about where periodic dips in the price aren't affecting the fact that you're still saving money. You don't tend to see, you know, 10%, 15% drops in electric rates. And again, when you look at historical data, the long-term trend is up. So I think it would be worrisome if we were very close to your existing rate. That is quite likely, actually, that at some point it would drop below that. But I think by starting at at least 10% and oftentimes 20% to 30% below the existing rate, you're insulated from that.
So thank you for that answer, but the short answer to that is that whatever we negotiate, and I know Emily said she bets it probably isn't going to be a problem, but that verbiage makes me uncomfortable when we're committing to town for 20 years. But the succinct, simple answer to this question is, whatever rate we negotiate when this goes into effect, regardless of what happens with utility rates statewide, if they should go down, we're not getting that. We're going to lock in at what we are on day one, and that's it for 20 years.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Sacala.
Thank you.
Counselor Bosco.
So I have several questions, and what I'm going to do is kind of compare this to how it would work for a homeowner. So the length of the contract would be 20 years. What is, I guess, the shelf life of a solar panel? That's my first question.
The warranties that you get from the manufacturer are typically at least 20 years. So, you know, there's other equipment within, that depends clearly on the main, one of the main components of the system. There's some other, one of the other primary pieces is an inverter. Those are warranted typically between 10 and 15 years. And so throughout the term of the PPA, you would expect to have to replace it at least once. But that's a cost that we would bear as the owner of the system.
Okay. So let me ask you this. What would happen if we put it on a building, and then five years down the road, we discover this building is no longer going to be used? What do we do with those panels? What happens if we end the contract early?
Then there's a termination fee.
And how much is that?
It depends on the, how much time is left in the contract. Essentially, it's a value calculated on what you would have paid over the expected term.
Okay, so humor me. I want to cancel the contract 10 years in. Give me an estimation.
I mean, we could get back to you on, the variables are just so wide on, you know, what size system we're talking and everything. But, I mean, you're looking, yeah, I want to say it.
Okay, that's fine.
Hundreds of thousands.
Okay. So would you be, let's say we put this on a building or did a canopy carport type of thing. Would you be looking to get to 100% of that building's electrical usage to be replaced by solar usage? Are you trying to get to that 100%?
No, we cap the amount of a building's usage that will own a system that will offset at 85%.
Okay, so you cap at 85%. Now, let's, I don't know how to word this correctly to not be confusing, but I know what I wouldn't try to say. So how much of the solar energy collected on those panels is going to go to that building versus how much is going to go to the grid?
So it depends on the building and how it's used. I mean, as you can imagine, solar panels produce their electricity when, you know, when the sun's out. So, you know, if it's a school that is, most of its usage is during the day, then when school's in session, you know, typically you will be, instead of putting that power onto the grid, you'll be consuming it on-site. However, during the summer, you're not really, you know, your demand will be much lower in that building, so you'll be putting a lot of it back onto the grid. You know, an office building or a town hall that maybe is open on the weekend, perhaps those usage patterns are pretty steady, so you are consuming most of the power on-site. It really varies based on how the building's used. So that's from an electricity standpoint. From a credit standpoint and the value of the electricity to you, it doesn't really matter whether it's used on-site or put on the grid, because when you put it on the grid, you get credit, you get the bank debt essentially for when you do need it, when the building wouldn't be using electricity.
Right. So in other words, are you saying 100% of that 85% is going to be used on that building?
From a credit, from like a billing perspective, that's what I'm saying.
Okay.
Not from the actual, when you think about like the, when you're thinking about the actual electrons that the system will produce, probably, no, they won't all actually be used on-site. But your bill and the economics of the system will be like they are. And that's why we make, that's why we size it at 85%, because if you produce more power than you use on-site over the course of a year, then you're not going to get the same value of the electricity from the utility for when you're overproducing. And at that point, you know, what the gentleman earlier was worried about happening, where you would be credited that electricity at a much lower rate than you'd be paying us for it. So we never want that to happen, which is why we're careful about making sure you're going to be able to use all that power that the system produces.
Okay. So you said that this is a fixed rate for 20 years. Is there anything that goes up each year as far as the fees that we would be paying to you? Are there any fees that go up annually?
No, this is not like your electric bill where you have a bunch of different fees that are, you know, that you're charged based upon how much you use. You know, if you look at your bill, you've got generation, you've got transmission, you've got a bunch of public policy charge and all these other things that can, even if your generation were to stay flat, those could change. Our purchase agreement, not like that at all. It's just the price for the electricity, and that is fixed for the term of the contract.
So you mentioned the tax credit. Would the municipality see 100% of that tax credit? So let's say the tax credit was $10,000. Is that entire $10,000 going to be, I guess, seen or credited to the town? Or is Green Bank Solar going to see some of that?
Some of the value will be, so we partner with private investors, and there's a particular type of finance built around those tax credits. It's called tax equity. And those tax equity investors, as you can imagine, they're not doing it out of the goodness of their heart. So they are, they're extracting some value out of the structure. So, no, not 100% of the value is passed on, but some of the value is.
How, can you give me a percentage?
I can't. You know, we could look at, well, let me just give you an example. So, I don't know, so the tax credit right now is worth 26% of the overall cost of the system. You get a dollar-for-dollar tax credit, 26% of the cost. So let's say you build a $100,000 system, $26,000, somebody gets to reduce their tax by that. Next year, that goes down to 22%. If you look at the PPA rate that you would be able to get this year, the 26% year, versus the 22% year, your PPA rate is going to go up by somewhere between like half a penny and a penny. So, you know, just kind of, and that's a 4% difference in that tax credit. So, you know, it does make a big difference if that incentive goes down. And, you know, I think a lot of the value is being passed on, because when it goes down even just a little bit, you're, you know, you see a big hit to the PPA rate you get. But, yeah, I mean, to cut right to the heart of your question, you're not getting 100% of the value.
Right, okay. All right, last question. Thank you for indulging me. So let's say you put it on a town building, and then we need to do some roof repairs. Who pays for the panels to come down and then back up?
You do. So that's one of the key things we look at early on in that process we just outlined, is how old are those roofs? Because we don't want to put it on a roof that's, you know, 10 or 10 or more years old. You want to have enough remaining life in that roof for at least the term of the PPA.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Bosco.
Thank you, Counselor Bosco.
Yeah, I apologize, I walked in late. But there were two things you were talking about. One, I guess, if we purged them or whatever, and then buying the credits from someone else, which I think we tried doing before. But one of the big things on my bill is the delivery rate. How's that going to work if we decide to go either way with this?
So you're, I'll have to make some guesses, but I assume you're, you're, you're talking about at your home?
Well, whatever. I mean, at my home, my business, I'm sure that the town has to pay a delivery rate. And I don't think Eversource is going to give them a free ride on that. So someone has to pay a delivery rate. So are we still going to get a delivery rate on the, maybe we won't get a delivery rate on the stuff that we make off of our roof. But once it goes out into the system, are we going to pay a delivery rate to get it back?
Right, so the, there are two types of charges on your bill. Not so much the residential one, but on a municipal or commercial bill. One is what you're billed by the kilowatt hour. So that's how much you actually consume. And then the other is based upon kilo, your demand.
Right, that was my next question on the demand, how you pay on demand.
Yep. So your home bills are typically, for the most part, all kilowatt-hour based. You've got some fixed charges that you're going to get charged no matter how much you use, but pretty much everything is, you know, based on how much you use. Most likely, your municipal buildings, you've got your kilowatt usage, and a lot of some of those are delivery fees, what you're referencing. So for the, let's say you put solar on the municipal building, you're going to, you're going to buy a kilowatt hour from the solar system at whatever, you know, eight cents a kilowatt hour, let's just say. And then, so you're avoiding purchasing that kilowatt hour from your utility. And if you purchase that kilowatt hour from your utility, you want to pay whatever they charge for the electricity, the generation, 10 cents, plus everything else you're referencing, whatever else they charge by the kilowatt hour. So the transmission, the delivery, anything on that bill that stacks up on top of the generation. You're avoiding that charge per kilowatt hour for every kilowatt hour of solar you pay or you buy. So you're avoiding those charges for every kilowatt hour you can get from the solar system.
But the question is, the question is that you didn't answer. So in the winter, when we are not producing much power, do we get a credit on the delivery charge? Or do we have to pay the whole delivery charge when we don't? Or if even in the summer, we use a little more electricity than what per producing, we're still going to end up paying the delivery charge if we don't use it on Monday? And we need, you know, we have enough, we have overabundance on Monday, but on Tuesday, we need more power. So we're going to get stuck paying the delivery charge on that little piece we didn't use, right?
Nope, you don't. So go back to my example. Let's say you buy a kilowatt hour from us at eight cents, but it's on the Sunday at school and you don't need it. So it goes to the grid. And then on Monday, when you come in and, let's say it's cloudy and you turn the lights on, so you need to pull that down. You'll, instead of buying a kilowatt hour from the utility on Monday morning for their 10 cent generation plus everything on top of it, the transmission, the delivery, you'll pull your credit down on the solar, which will be worth the full value of everything. Generation, transmission, delivery, everything that they bill on a kilowatt hour basis. When you pull that solar credit down, it will reflect the full value of that, what it would have cost you to buy a kilowatt hour from them.
So you're banking your kilowatt hours, you're banking your delivery charges, you're banking anything else that would associate it for a charge upon, you know, with that?
Correct. That's why when we do our savings comparison for you, we're going to compare the PPA rate not just to your generation rate, but to everything else that's billed on a kilowatt hour basis. Transmission, delivery, the FMCC, the systems benefit charge, all the stuff that's billed kilowatt hour base. You get credited for that, for your solar electricity, when you bank it.
And what about demand?
So demand, no, we don't factor in any savings there, because they get you there. Because that's based on whenever, whatever 15-minute period your building is pulling the most electricity, that sets your demand charge, so.
So even if we're making the electricity, we still have to pay the demand charge?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
So when we do our savings analysis, we don't, you might reduce your demand charge a little bit, but we're not going to count on that because it's not guaranteed. So when we do the savings analysis, we don't factor that in at all.
Thank you, thank you. Counselor Hemmler.
You said you were working with some other towns. Can you tell us what towns you're working with?
Emily, you want to go through?
Sure. It would be Branford, Bolton, Woodbridge, Portland, Manchester, Mansfield, I'm missing one. The Fox was.
Groton.
Groton, thank you.
I have to go to the list.
That's it, thank you.
Counselor Engaer.
Counselor Sikala asked all my questions.
Counselor Muller.
I had a quick question, a couple. Connecticut Green Bank does several state agencies. What's the difference between the state agency layout and the layout you're doing for the municipalities? Also, you included all maintenance, the inverters, everything, like it wouldn't need Sunday hours. No one would have to come in on a Sunday. If town halls closed, you wouldn't need access to the roof or anything. Thank you.
That's correct. We would, it's all covered by us.
Thank you, Maggie.
Sorry about that, sorry. Yeah, so all the costs are covered by us, and then we would work with you. We do regular, I say regular, at least once annually, preventive maintenance, and we would schedule that with you all.
During normal hours.
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
And then your first question about the layouts for the state project. What do you mean exactly by layout?
We have Connecticut Green Bank for some state agencies as well. Is the layout the same for the municipalities? The deal the same? Like you don't list the state agencies you do as well, you just say municipalities?
Yeah, so this program actually grew out of what we're doing with the state. They weren't doing solar projects, and so we stepped in to help them get projects done. And over the course, and really to do this exact thing, which we actually know, we call it SolarMAP for the state.
And how many state agencies?
Right now, we're actually in Enfield. We're working with the Department of Corrections, Department of Energy and Environmental Protection, and Department of Administrative Services in the first round of projects. And we're, I got a second round with the technical high schools, Department of Transportation, and some other deep sites.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Just had a quick question. Curious, is this just for government agencies? Or is there, is this like the public could actually tap into it, residents?
So we started with the state, as I mentioned, and then we offered it to municipalities, and the first round has gone well. And, you know, there's, that's an interest. So we're working on a similar program for the multifamily sector.
So is there a way to negotiate through the 20-year, or even if we signed up for a 20-year deal, and then we decided we wanted to open it up to our residents or our businesses or both, can that deal be altered? So, you know, I agree with the philosophy of doing this, but at some point, we got to come up with some energy that actually allows our residents to save some money, and again, help the environment as well, not just the municipalities. So I'm just curious if that is part of your long-term plan, or it's not? Or just simply, you know, you're trying to get government agencies to convert over?
No, we have programs for homes, for businesses, nonprofits, really any, any type of building in Connecticut. We have programs to help them go solar, so.
Could we, could the town actually construct a program that actually our residents and businesses could tap into? Or does it have to be separate?
I think it would need, just trying to think it through.
And I guess where I'm going is, you know, for the environment and to compete with, you know, the cost of electricity, which a lot of folks just got their bill over the summer from Eversource, you know, is there a way to construct some sort of green power plant where we can actually, the town can actually run or work within Green Banks or federal loans, where we can actually control the production?
That's it. So yeah, so right now, it's not, Green Bank couldn't, it's not money that's the problem there. It's sort of the regulatory and policy structure. So we're, this program, we're trying to build solar systems to power your municipal buildings. You know, you, just the way it's sort of solar policy is in Connecticut, we can't build a big system on any open land.
Is that, that's a state regulation or federal regulation or both?
It's more the lack of way in Connecticut to incentivize those projects to get built there, right? There is, you might have folks, our solar developers coming to you talking about virtual net metering.
Right, right.
That's a, that's a program which can benefit municipalities.
So for me, I mean, I think this is a great idea. But for me, I think it needs to be bigger for me. Meaning, it needs to be where we can actually have our residents benefit and our businesses who are paying. Again, as we're going through, you know, very difficult economic times, if the town's going to benefit from solar energy, we'd be, we'd love to be able to have, you know, our residents and our businesses do the same. So I don't know if that's out of your scope or something we can talk through in the future, but I really think that's, that's really where it needs to go, in my opinion, especially when you're talking about getting surrounding towns. I mean, if we had a, some sort of solar power plant in Enfield, you could easily go, you know, you could connect the Suffield, Windsor Locks, Summers, all these other surrounding towns, and now you have a regional grid, so to speak. I guess for me, I would like to see that as part of this, because it really has to get to that level, if you know what I mean. I mean, at some point, it has to go more where, you know, again, it's you save some money over a number of years. But it has to be, I think, to a level where we need, right, exactly. I guess that's my, yeah, exactly.
Yeah, so we can't help, we can't help with exactly what you're talking about. That's, you know, we got to push at the state policy level for that. But we can help scale the behind-the-meter, which is what we're talking about, where you're putting solar on individual buildings, whether they're municipal or your residents or your businesses. We have programs to help residents and businesses.
And we could.
But it's just a matter of scaling.
Right, because we would, I would want to negotiate that in. So our residents, if they chose to, or the businesses could try, take advantage of, hopefully would be leverage or some sort of economies of scale that the town could bring. You know, I think to Counselor Sikala's question, I mean, we do have some issues with roofs with some of our schools that this may not, you know, benefit from just now until we get them fixed. But I think there's other ways we could generate this, you know, again, through the, through our businesses and our residents, if they chose to participate, you know, because I think, again, I just think it needs to be broader than just municipal buildings, in my opinion. That's only my, it's not a criticism, it's just, you know, I would like to see us be able to pull that off at some point in the near future.
Yes, we'd love to work with you on.
Can I make a comment?
No, thank you, I appreciate it.
Can I make my comment?
Sorry, go ahead, yep.
Okay, it's Donna Suzan, TV land, so to speak. Okay, I guess, I appreciate, Mike, your enthusiasm, but they came, Green Bank came before facilities. And part of why we've been working so diligently to, at the Henry Burner School, get that roof complete is because we would like for Green Bank to look at a project for us. Because under our privy, we have the people from solar energy, the Clean Energy Committee that we had. And I think that, you know, I'm always a person, I like to start small before I go big, because I can't, I have to feel comfortable with what I can control. And I think there's a couple of things that Green Bank could really help us to understand. I mean, we've looked at the, you know, the virtual net metering. This is more, I guess, zero net metering. You know, I wish Melissa, I have Melissa's brainpower here as to explain these things. But I think the big thing that Green Bank brings to us is that they can do a full analysis of a site and tell us if it is a site that is a possibility that we can save money and lower our carbon footprint. I think we've also dealt with Green Bank before all this stuff where we would get credits and get things. So municipalities have benefited from Green Bank, and specifically Enfield, from the previous programs. So I guess this is truly why the Facilities Committee and Kasia, you know, have asked for this to come forward. And I love the enthusiasm of doing everything for everybody. But we did have, you know, CT Solar, which solarized a lot of our residential. And the residential people are capable of getting the government credits that municipalities and from why probably commercial do not benefit from. So I just wanted to clarify, you know, why we brought this presentation forward for facilities.
Any other questions? Thank you. Counselor Mangini.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I think I just want to dovetail with Donna's questions and responses. I do agree with starting small. But what I'd like to find out is a possibility that the company could identify a building, and if so, would there be a cost to our town to do that? And then secondly, I'd like to see a potential draft of a contract to see where we are with that and what the detail would look like in the contract itself. I mean, I understand, you know, that you've answered the questions about, you know, what our town would be responsible for, but I think I'd like to see a draft of a contract, if that's possible. Thank you.
Sure. The project steps with SolarMAP is kind of starting with a, with a desktop review or 30,000-foot review of all the buildings that you guys are interested in, and then zeroing in from there, working with stakeholders on the municipal side to get the green light all the way through. So eventually, we would come to you with a project proposal, pricing proposal, with no obligation and no cost. And we've got a template power purchase agreement that can be shared.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. And we have to wrap this up. So anything, Emily and Maggie, again, we appreciate you being here. Any closing thoughts or comments?
Well, thank you all for your time. And of course, we can provide the slides and happy to answer follow-up questions directly or set up a meeting for further discussion.
Great. Thank you both for being here. We really appreciate it, it was very informative. Thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you.